To the town of Ankrum. Welcome everyone to the town of Ankrum planning board meeting May fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. Jay, can you call the roll please first?
Yes, one moment. Joe Crocco.
President.
Bob Roach.
Here.
Aaron Robertson.
Here.
Ann Rader.
Here.
Palmer Irving.
Here.
Colleen Lutz.
President.
Philip Hack.
He's here.
Yep. Present on Zoom and Tom Rondalo.
Here. Okay, we have a full board and our one ultimate is also with us. Um, there are no minutes at this point in time. So we'll keep them till next month. Jay, any correspondence?
Yep, so I was speaking with Nan about the training and um. She is not available on the date that um George is available. So I will be speaking with Joe Crocco about moving forward on what date we want to do it and whether we just want to have the training with George. Or whether we want them both present. I also had sent Nan a application, the Morale Bauta application. She was not able to review it and. Is apologizing because of um she was unable to review it because of an injury. So that will be forthcoming.
That. Anybody have any conflicts with any of the items on the agenda? And then we're proceeding. All business, ONG. Special use permit renewal. Well, there's a long history to this application. It was started, I guess, back in October as a renewal to a special use department. Well, after extensive research from our town attorney. And his associate, it has been determined that. It is a non-conforming use because of the change of the code in two thousand and three. And that being the case, um, the town can't require um. The applicant to um. Uh, apply for a special use permit, so um. We have no jurisdiction over this application apparently, so I'm gonna read a resolution. So that you can put this to bed and um. Not have to be involved, but have a public here, so. The resolution to the town of Ankrum planning board, the matter of the application of ONG Industries Incorporated. To renew a special use permit. To conduct mining on tax parcels number two oh eight dot this one. There's fourteen dot a hundred and two oh seven dot dash one dash twenty-four. Whereas the background, the applicant is ONG Industries Incorporated. Referred to hereafter as the applicant, the applicant has been represented before the board by Richard Warren, Associate Vice President. Of ONG Industries Incorporated and Kevin Brown Esquire, the law firm of Vogel and Brown, D.C. To the project is proposed for two phase part. For two adjacent parcels located on New York State, New York Route twenty-two in the town of Ankrum, Columbia County. And which bears, which the properties bear the following tax parcel. Identification numbers, tax parcel number two oh eight dot dash one dash fourteen dot one hundred and two oh seven dot dash. One, there's two, there's twenty-four collectively, the property. Pursuant to the zoning map of the town of Ankrum, the applicant's property is located in an agricultural zoning district. And is also in the scenic corridor overlay zoning district. The name of the proposed project is Boston Corners Mining Project. The applicant has applied to the planning board for a five-year renewal of a special use permit. Last renewed in two thousand and seventeen to perform sand and gravel mining on the property by the terms of permit. By its terms, the permit expires on November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. The applicant has applied to the board to renew the special use permit prior to his exp- uh expiration. The applicant, too, the application and land use history before two thousand and three mining was allowed. Allowed use in the A G zoning district, subject to special use permit. In two thousand and three, the scenic corridor overlay zone district was. Originally created to adopt adoption of the town of Ankrum local law number one of two thousand and three. The S C O Z. Changed the allowed use in the district and prohibited mining in the district, and that was done at a scale that would require a mining permit. Pursuant to the mine lands reclamation law, M L R L. Issued by New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, New York State D E C. However, according to the S C O Z district provisions adopted in two thousand and three. Any mining operations that lawfully existed at the time of the S C O Z district was adopted. And which had been issued, the M L R L mining permit by the New York State D E C was allowed to continue to operate in the. S C O Z district as a conforming use.
Not non.
Non-conforming use upon information and belief, the applicant conducted mining on the land prior to the. Adoption of the S C O Z district. Number five, information believe the applicant applied for and obtained the state M L R L permit. To conduct mining on its property from the New York State law. Prior to the adoption of the S C O Z district. Towards the end of two thousand and twenty-two, upon information and belief, the applicant renewed its New York State. Mining permit with the New York State D C. Upon information and belief, the applicant also applied and obtained special use permits. To conduct mining on its property from the Ankrum Planning Board prior to the adoption of the S O Z. S C O Z district. The applicant has continued to apply and obtain for the, from the Ankrum Planning Board special use permits, which have been renewed every five years. The most recent special use permit issued to the applicant to conduct mining was issued in two thousand and seventeen and was valid until two thousand and twenty-two. For another renewal was required, for another renewal was required. During the course of the renewal. During the course of the review, the planning board asked the attorney to assist in the review. Of the pending special use permit renewal application in connection with the request for assistance, the planning board posed questions. About the possible cessation of the mining activity on the property about the possibility impact of such cessation. Before reaching the question about possible cessation of the mining use. Of the land, the planning board attorney advised the board of the opinion regarding the use, the current use of the property. Our attorney said, although mining is prohibited in the S C O Z, it is. District in the mining use exists lawfully as the adoption date of the law one of two thousand and three, which created the S C O Z. Then the mining use is granted non-conforming use status and allowed to continue, subject to the limitations set forth in the zoning law. Article five, B three six. Our attorney also advised the boards that what the meat would. That board that what this means is that even though mining is not permitted in the S C O Z, in this case, because the applicant. Obtained the New York State D E C mining permit from before the S C O Z was enacted, it's legally allowed to exist. After the adoption of the S C O Z as a non-conforming use. Our attorney have, our attorneys have advised us in connection with the non-conforming use of the property, the S C O Z district. Limitations on non-conforming use mines apply. The applicant continue only to the extent of the life of the mine at mine. Life of mine area to the extent of the limits of the existing mining permit from the New York State D E C. Any expansion beyond the approved life of the mine area. Whereby boundaries, by boundary or excavation is prohibited, but as long as the applicant is still operating. In accordance with the New York State D E C mining permit, they will, they will, they are still treated as a non-conforming use under the Ankrum zoning law. Our attorneys have advised us that operating a valid non-conforming use requires no permits. Permit renewals from the town of Ankrum, consequently, the special use permit. Conditions will not be enforceable as they apply to the applicant's mining activities. Our attorneys have advised us that although the applicant has repeatedly applied to the planning boards since two thousand and three, seeking a renewal of a special. Use permit legally. No special use permit was required once the applicant's mining use of the property was converted in two thousand and three. From an allowed use, subject to special permit to a non-conforming use. And therefore, there's no legal reason for the applicant to be seeking a special use permit from the board. Thus, the applicant does not require a special use to continue its mining operation pursuant to the New York State D E C mining permit. It has received. It had mining permit, it has received so long as the New York State D E C mining permit. Has the same boundaries of life of mine and excavation limitations as was issued prior to two thousand and three. In the view of the foregoing, our attorneys have recommended the planning board to the planning board that it should terminate the review of the application. Renew the special use permit, the application. That applicant does not need a special use permit due to its non-conforming use status. Action break. Now therefore, it would be resolved based on the foregoing as follows. Section A, based on the foregoing, the, based on the legal advice received from its attorney. As it summarized above in this resolution, the planning board declares that it. Review of the application for renewal of a special use permit is terminated because the applicant does not require. A special use permit to conduct mining on a property as a non-conforming use. Any fees paid to the town of Ankrum by the applicant in connection with the application shall be refunded to the applicant. But section C, nothing in this resolution shall change the fact. That the conduct of. Sort of nothing in the resolution shall change the fact that the conduct of mining in the property by the applicant. Shall be subject to the revised provisions of the S C O C district limitations. On non-conforming uses as it's set forth in the town Ankrum zoning law. Article five, section B, three C, and to the revisions of article. Eight of the town of Ankrum zoning law, which governs non-conforming uses generally. Can I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Hold on.
Don, the second.
He said.
Bob. And Colleen. Okay. All in favor? Joe Crocco, yes. Aaron.
Yes.
Bob Roach, yeah. Philip Hack.
Yes.
Colleen Lutz.
Yes.
Palmer Irving.
Yeah.
Ann Rader.
Yes.
Okay. So. Motion passes by the following margin of seven to zero. And it's dated Thursday, fourth of May, two thousand and three. If copies will be provided, if this could be turned, if it has in the app already. So that part is done. Now, there's a second part to um what we're dealing with, and this is also um. As recommended by our attorney, um. So I'll read it, it's another resolution for the board to um. Make a motion or move on. Referral of the question regarding possible land use violations in the town of Ankrum zoning enforcement officer. Regarding the conduct of mining by ONG Industries Incorporated on tax part. Number two oh eight dot dash one dash fourteen dot one hundred and two oh seven dot dash one dash twenty-four. Whereas. One, ONG Industries, ONG is the owner of two adjacent parcels. Located in New York State Route twenty-two in the town of Ankrum. Columbia County and which properties bear the following tax. Parcel identifications, tax number parcel number dot two oh eight dot dash one dash fourteen. Dot a hundred and two oh seven dot dash one dash twenty-four collectively, the property pursuant to the. Zoning map of the town of Ankrum, the applicant's properties are located in the agricultural zoning district. Also in the scenic corridor overlay zoning district. The resolution follows the board's earlier resolution, resolution terminating its review of the ONG application. For renewal of a special use permit on the grounds of ONG does not require a special use permit to conduct mining. On the property as a non-conforming use. The resolution incorporates by reference the application and land use history set forth. In that resolution and reviewing the planning board three, in reviewing the planning board's review of ONG's. Special use permit application, however, it appears that it may be the ONG's non-conforming uses terminated. Due to discontinuance of the use. Four, Ankrum zoning law. Article eight governs non-conforming uses, article eight, section B two says. Discontinuance of any non-conforming use for a period of more than two years. Shall terminate the non-conforming status of that use. A non-conforming use so terminated shall therefore only be replaced by a conforming permitted use. Five, during the course of the review. The planning board asked the attorney to advise this question, our attorney advised the planning board is not authorized to interpret. They interpret the zoning law and neither is the planning board authorized to determine if the applicant's non-conforming use has terminated. We were advised further that such determination is within the jurisdiction of the town of Ankrum zoning enforcement officer. And having such determination made by the Z E O will start an adjudication process that will afford due process to ONG. Pursuant to article four, section A, five of the Ankrum zoning law. The planning board may refer to the question about a possible violation to the zoning enforcement officer. Now therefore be it resolved based on the foregoing as follows. Section A, based on the foregoing, the planning board refers to the town of Ankrum zoning enforcement officer, the question. As whether ONG is right to mine its property as a non-conforming use has terminated due to the discontinuance. Of that pursuant to the Ankrum zoning law. Article eight, section B two, and that if any continued. Mining of the property would constitute a violation of the town or Ankrum zoning law. B, the planning board authorizes Joe Crocco as planning board chairman to make a referral to the zoning enforcement officer. I have a motion.
So, second.
Palmer. And Colleen. In favor, Joe Crocco, yes. Aaron Robertson.
Yes.
Bob Roach, yes. Philip Hack.
Yes.
Colleen Lutz.
Yes.
Palmer Irving.
Yeah.
Ann Rader.
Yes.
Okay, so the motion passes to zero. So. Next. What should cover? ONG Noel. Don, did we take any questions or?
I think what you may want to say is that uh. Copies of both, written copies of both resolutions are available for anybody that's interested. We'll leave, um, I don't know, we'll be giving a few, we can leave those for you. Also, uh, for those that are interested in a fuller explanation of the legal basis for the advice that was given to the board. We've drafted a short memo uh and brought copies here, and those are also available to anybody in the public that would like to. Uh, take a copy of that memo and maybe understand.
Okay, so I don't have to repeat that everybody. Um, I guess I want to say something, yeah.
All right, uh, Bill Service, Crocco, Kevin Brown. Okay, I'm just so you know, here tonight, also with me is uh T J Negli, President of ONG Industries. Uh, Ken Murray, Secretary and General Counsel of ONG Industries. And you all, you all know Richard Warren, who's been here before. And Brent's here with us tonight, and I sure needs introduction, we had dinner, we knew everybody's brother and sister, everybody at the restaurants, I don't think he needs introduction. Uh, we'll certainly address these questions, uh, but I would like a copy of the. Do you have copies of the rest?
We have paper copies here tonight, if you'd like to send you like. Be there for you. Yeah, sorry, I've got holes tonight, I'm trying not to spread around everybody else.
We won't keep very long, is that? Okay. Anybody else here that's interested in copies of any of the documents?
We'll leave, we'll leave these with you, just in case someone comes in later and then uh. You'll have them in more time to make these copies.
And thank you.
Very thank you, there, new board, uh, Mr. Chairman, is it okay if we depart?
Yes, thank you for all your great, thanks for all on this matter, huh? Okay. Next item on the agenda is new business. Uh, we have a pre-application conference for Green Hill Farms. Yeah. Yeah, that green hill. Okay, I'll just pull it out then. No, okay. You see though. This is. I have.
So everybody. Uh, that's going to be behind board numbers, if you want, and spin around and take it straight up. But.
Yeah, okay.
And then give them to Jay, you'll use them, right, this is Jay.
Jay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Do you know the password to get our wifi here?
Um, use the Ankrum guest wifi.
Yeah.
And the password is visitors.
Oh.
With a capital or?
Um, I believe it's all lowercase, but tribal.
Yeah.
Okay. Green Hill Farms.
Green Hill Farms.
Yeah. You identify yourself.
I can, Andy, did you know it's a kind of engineering? Uh, here on behalf of Green Hill Farm. So the applicant has a farm property currently that he would like to subdivide, do a four lot subdivision. Three new parcels and maintain a large portion to be his existing farm. We will see in the existing conditions plan with a forty-seven point eight acre parcel. That we're seeking to subdivide off of the existing farm, which is a hundred and fifteen, I believe acres, uh, a hundred and fifteen point six eight acres. So right now, he's got a uh regenerative farming operation on the east side of Route seven. He'd like to subdivide this off for three residential lots, so be a, a four lot subdivision total. So this is the existing condition plan, which is essentially the survey, which is the final sheet, you'll see in the plan. Um, so here's the proposed subdivision plan. Three parcels, a seventeen point six inch acre parcel and eighteen point. Five roughly and eleven point seven roughly acre parcel. Um, three residential lots. All with driveway egress to County seven, so we are coordinating with uh County D P W to have them review the, the curb cuts. We have an existing curb cut, there's an existing residence that's in pretty tough shape that would get demolished um down by the road. Use the existing curb cut for the northern parcel and then two additional curb cuts that we will, we're coordinating with D P W on for the curb cut location. We've already um conducted site soil investigation for the septic systems with Columbia County Department of Health. Um, we'll add those to the plans and get, you know, septic um design for what the absorption fields will be for each one of the parcels. Um, and then we've also roughed in driveways to make sure that we can meet fire code. Uh, maximum grades and turnouts and, and uh, and. And egress up to the, of the houses. And then the last sheet is just a copy of the survey conducted by uh, Alec, you know, and Lance Savage. So this would be the subdivision plan that you'd be ultimately approving and then in conjunction with. Uh, the more civil engineering components that would be septic driveway house location form.
Yeah. That's it.
All I've got.
Okay. Round. Pretty steep parts. Um. We need to see driveway profiles.
Sure.
Well, we don't like to go over ten percent.
Yeah, all of these are under ten, they're at about, I think eight roughly uh is the maximum, but yeah, we maintain ten percent. Uh, under ten percent for the fire, for the New York State fire crews.
Very disturbance. We're in a new disturbing area.
Yeah, yeah, this is obviously.
Yeah, part of the site plan, and this was kind of our early rendition, so area of disturbance, we do have that on the secret form, so it's one point seven five acres. We will need a, a speedies permit. For, so partial sweat with erosion sediment control plan, that'll be all part of the plans when we do our official submission.
Is this, um. Trailer?
I'm sorry, trailers, no.
Those tree lines.
Oh, tree line, uh, you can see the existing tree line, so uh, the tree line comes up, this is all kind of shrub scrub, if you will. Um, and metal, and here's the existing tree line that can bend around, you can see we're primarily essentially kind of pushing them up. Because they're, they, the houses do have nice views when you get up towards the top of the, of the site, so. Um, trying to kind of balance the maximizing of the views for the parcels, but also not having to do a lot of tree removal or cut into steep slopes. So really driving up to, you see the tree line kind of skirts right behind the outside, so minor tree removal. On the backside of the house, just to make stable slopes and to essentially protect the houses from falling trees. Um, but really preserving the tree line.
There's no significant trees in front of this?
No, no, all of this, if you drive Route seven, so this is West Ball Road. And Route seven, which I would imagine probably want to do a site visit and go take a stroll, so you'll be able to see. Kind of, I, I think in this area, because we've got this existing driveway to make as. Even though it's a bit of a circuitous route to make the best driveway path we could, um. There's some minor tree removal in this driveway parcel, but um. Or the northern parcel for that driveway, but we can probably. Um, or the northern parcel for that driveway, but we can probably.
We have a hundred and fifty foot stream buffer. And if you read the definition of that, it includes the up and slopes. Which. Most of that first driveway is really in the buffer. The northern road driveway.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so certainly the hundred and fifty foot, but to recognize the slopes that are coming down to that, so to read the definition that we have. And also in our um, buffers, there's an affection for buffers in the, in the zone law for. Uh, specifically for the stream buffers.
Okay.
And, and that definition really describes any um, um, associated wetlands or slopes.
Sure.
With that.
Yeah, okay.
Um, there's also um, in for minor subdivisions. Uh, requested that you revert, review the Ankrum Significant Habitats map.
Mm-hmm.
And I reviewed it for that property and, and what shows up on most of that area. Is a talus slope. Which means what exposed bent rock, very shallow soils.
Yeah, I noticed that, um, and when, when we had done our deep test, we didn't, we didn't find that. We actually were able to dig down to about six or seven feet without hitting any bedrock, so I saw that and it, it was puzzling because we don't send any talus. Bedrock in the areas where we're actually doing our soil investigation. We can, we can do some probes up by the house site potentially, but we didn't actually find that, we were able to. Get away with, I, I think maximum of two feet of fill, um, and that was because of impermeable soil layers, not because of bedrock encounter.
Alright, it looks though like that this cut. You know, there's new uh, lines on there.
Yep.
I mean, that's really significant, this cut, I mean, I'm measuring like thirty feet. Height difference, um, ten foot height difference and thirty feet. Um, like a thirty percent slope, that's your proposing.
Three on one, so it would be, you know, it's for every uh, every three foot horizontal, we have a foot of vertical. So it's, it's effectively the, the, what the DEC considers a stable slope. So when you re-vegetate that slope, if you go any, any further beyond a three on one slope, you have to do. Like a geo grid or more engineered stabilization method, measures than just a three on one where you can see and grasp it. And it won't self erode essentially, so this is all, as you see it now, any of the contour lines that are kind of tying back in are all throughout the slope. So it's the least invasive and least like, when you, when you start doing, if you're really tight on space and you've got to like catch up before a property line or something. And you gotta cut a two on one, you have to do like a plastic geo grid for, you know, an engineered sort of stabilization, which we. Obviously for cost reasons, for several reasons, we prefer not to do that. And put the plastic in the ground.
Earthwork here to, to get these driveways so long. And up this hill, do you think that your client would consider putting the houses lower on that site?
Probably not, because the value really is in the view, um, and there, as you get down the, the slope. As you can see, the slope is pretty consistent as you're going down, so the driveways and the work, work. This is a preliminary plan for a sketch plan review, we're gonna have roadside swales that will manage stormwater with. Um, we'll check velocities to make sure whether or not it needs to be grass line swell or should, or should it be a, a rip rack line swell? We always set level spreaders at the bends, so if we've got something that's gonna be discharging here, we'll set a level spreader, so we get, we transition that point discharge to a sheet flow. So all that will be incorporated into the, essentially the final plan. But yeah, I would say from, I mean, from a, from a zoning perspective, from, from, at the end of the day. The, the, he's creating conforming lots, he's kind of essentially creating lots that are going to be of value. That will justify the work that's, it takes to develop nowadays.
About in hand, but not to the community and to the scenic resources of our nice slopes like that. And that is laid out in our natural resource conservation.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take a look at that, see.
You're just applying for the subdivision now, we didn't have abbreviated site plan review for each individual house. So you're not applying for that simultaneously?
No, uh, we're just, exactly.
But if he shows these houses way up there, Richie, it's supposed to show the building envelope for this. Then it kind of opens that door for abbreviated site plan review that we approved that plan.
I mean, we can run, we can run them concurrently and we can provide what you need for abbreviated site plan, so that we do it all in one fell swoop.
There isn't allowed to do that.
I just wanted to know where we were going, so we went in both directions with the same simultaneously.
Yeah, I noticed that, because you, you, you're zoning, your, your subdivision regs do require quite a bit of the, you're almost halfway there. Then it comes to abbreviated site plan, so it makes sense to run them concurrently, because we do it typically, we want to know that. A driveways are gonna work, septic's gonna work, we have a building envelope, all of those things that essentially come with site plan anyway, so. We'd be happy to run them concurrent.
Do you have an idea where your proposed well sites are gonna be?
We don't as of yet, but we'll show them, because it'll be part of the septic plan. Typically, we set them up near the house, which because of the slopes, your septic can't be on fifteen percent more slope, so every, all the septics are. Little bit lower on the hillside, so the wells will be up there, but we can show them.
Um, another thing, um. In your driveway plan. Given the distance or the length of the driveways, um, you probably want to consider making some sort of turnout up at the top for emergency vehicles.
We will, yeah, um.
Which will ask your, does it still have to start out?
I want to see, yeah, I want to see how long the driveways are, the, the, the fire truck turnout, or the fire truck. A driveway over five hundred feet then becomes a fire apparatus access road, requires the turnout and all that stuff. Um, I want to see, I think these two qualify as not requiring a fire truck actual turnaround, because they get. You know, when we're talking about soil disturbance and that sort of thing, the area is like seventy five feet by fifty feet, it becomes a pretty intrusive. Situation up by the house, um, so this one may require it. And that's something we'll look at as we're going through the full, again, the full finer grading details.
Yeah, I don't think we're gonna want to have a fire truck trying to back down any of these driveways.
Now, whether the distances are not there.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're not straight and they're long and pretty steep.
Right.
Are really serious. If you go wide, you don't have to do a.
Yeah, there's.
And, and they could be rattled there.
Yeah, actually, we've done them too, where we've done the portions that are kind of the modified T or T where it's reinforced turf. So that they've got a spot to turn around, but it doesn't look like a landing strip. Yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I have noticed on here, but this is something that we may want to discuss at some point. We're getting close to that, that lot count issue with the article.
I'm sorry, the what?
Oh, the lockout. And so I'm wondering if it should be noted on the plan that any further subdivision of this. Lot would require a major. It should be on the file, definitely.
Is there a, is there a look back period that you guys have in your zoning order? And again, I, his, yeah, his intent is not to subdivide it. No, meaning like, you're not allowed to subdivide, subdivide it further in perpetuity would constitute a major, or it's like ten years that.
I can, I can clarify that the language is in the subdivision regulations. On the two thousand seventeen subdivision regulations, which are available online. I, I can also send them to you if you request them. Any subdivisions after two thousand and thirteen count. Uh, to the cumulative minor to a major subdivision. There has been a lot line adjustment involving that parcel, and there's been a subdivision. Involving a parcel that was um, across the street. So those were both when it was um, owned by the estate. Of Le Case.
So we'll take a look at the subject, but I'm sure we could add a note in there, whatever's commensurate to the, yeah, subdivision plot, sure.
Right. That way, it stays not necessarily with just that order, so it's.
Yeah, he doesn't do another three and another three and another three.
So that, if, if they were to sell, then they would not understand that.
Sure.
We might.
No.
Any else have a question? What would you like us to do for you in this evening?
Uh, I think I'm just satisfying the sketch plan review requirement and we will, uh, I mean, you've given me some great feedback to date. We'll continue to flesh out the plans, um, go through with it, when, uh, actually, if you've got little insight on what the abbreviated site plan. Is there a section in the zoning code that, when you raise all that, alright. Oh, architectural design?
Yeah. I don't know what the intention is, but the intention.
That's, that's our, that's a major subdivision. Because the parcel of all that property was in conjunction with this property here now that he has. And they subdivide that into three parcel. Now we're gonna pay three parcels here, that's up to six now, and plus one left, that's seven.
But was that before twenty thirteen, when they did that three parcel one?
Bob, do you know what subdivision that was?
It's the one right come back for Ankrum.
So where uh, Scott Owen asked.
Subdivide that piece off and they, and they.
They put three on.
Three out of them.
That's what, I didn't realize that was the same car, so.
When I looked it up, I don't believe that the, um. That parcel was. I mean, I know it was originally, but I don't think it was.
It was two separate farms. Originally, so what, what, what cat, what the brew farm, cat purchased that. And then about farm was south of, was a. Was owned by the mill, was very north family, and the cat bought that off of them. So I'm pretty sure that that land above. Seven, or either west side, it was, it was all the good food farm.
I believe that was, um, the. Parcel that Cohen wound up with from May Burger, I believe that that parcel was created in either nineteen ninety-eight. Or two thousand and two. And sold to May Burger then, so I think that was prior to two thousand and thirteen.
So it peeled off as a single separate parcel, then subdivided into three after two thousand and thirteen, so it was its own parcel at that point. How do we do that, say we're ready for next, yeah, who checks that?
That was my question.
Well, we have to chat.
Okay.
The planning board secretary role.
Okay.
So the planning board has sixty-two days uh, from the date of the sketch plan conference to make a determination. Regarding whether it's a major subdivision, minor subdivision, or boundary line adjustment, um. But I would say, I had thought that this was, uh, three lots. You said it's a four lot subdivision?
Yeah, it, it's, it's part of an existing parcel, so we're creating three new lots, so ultimately it's four lots, I mean, my. Typically, when we do that, you're creating four, it's a four lot subdivision, because we're creating four lots, we're just peeling three new ones off.
Yeah, but that lot also needs to be shown.
Um.
Right, is it extremely?
The flat only have to show you.
The full plot, okay, yeah, he, I don't think he.
The survey has to prepare your flat, so you probably didn't check your template. I mean, there's a key plan here. There is a key plan here that shows.
Yeah, yeah, and it, Dan, that's what's funny, it's not his first rodeo, I'm sure. Yeah, this is a lot, but I mean, you need, because he didn't survey that for. Hundred fifteen point four eight acre parcel, that's a, that's a. That's kind of a big gap, that survey, that they show that that's gonna remain as is. It's bisection by a road.
Whatever the county is gonna accept.
Yeah.
By, it was, it's gonna have meets and bounds, I would think, to describe the property, so the.
Well, and there, yeah, there is currently, because the, the current property boundary has a meets and bounds description. For the um, lines that are on the west side of um, Route Seven. So this is, does have its own meets and bounds description and bisection by seven. So it will, this is essentially an amendment to the deed or an amendment to the existing class where you're subdividing this standing, even though it's. It's bisectioned, so there's meets and bounds descriptions for that line. But I mean.
I, whatever is required.
Yeah. Dan, Dan wouldn't give me something that could be.
Yeah.
Yep, understood.
I guess we have to do a little homework and find out.
Again, about our natural. And, and clearly think that you need to refer to those in this design. And I really feel that this design does not need any of that. With loss of farmland, the um, long driveways, these houses. Um, at these higher elevations, um, I, I really think that we should consider. What's in this natural resource plan for um, the definition of rural sprawl. And our rural character, which is the goal of our town plan.
Yeah.
And it's really stated very clearly in the nat, in the natural resource protection plan.
Sure.
So. Um. Yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, uh, I'll take a look at that.
So it's the pleasure of the board. We. Brand sketch plan of the lots?
I'd say no. Sorry, um, he's got a lot of work to do, the driveways in the, in the buffer zone. Uh, there is a lot more stuff to do that you have a list to do, right, so.
Well, they're, they're all, they're all part and parcel to what would be part of the abbreviated sketch plan review, uh, abbreviated site plan review items. Not necessarily a sketch plan review. I mean, I, again, I, I will take a look at the natural resource. But I would say the. We're really not impacting a significant portion of natural resources here, it's shrub scrub hillside. We're being very cognizant of the fact that we're not cutting into existing tree line, yes, they're long driveways, but it's very characteristic of Ankrum. It's characteristic of Columbia County in general, we're not dealing with. Uh, uh, critical environmental habitat, we're not dealing with a lot of those things that. What your zoning code and your natural resource is, is geared toward, we're not impacting those items. We're just making use of the land and the view that is ultimately what's going to make these viable parcels. And that, I mean, again, we can have further the, the conversation as we go, but I would say to be able to move things along. We would appreciate sketch plan review, because I don't, I don't think we're providing a significant environmental impact or a significant view shed impact. Uncharacteristic of, you know, the parcel to the north that's up on the hill, all the other parcels that are surrounding that are elevated. They all are taking advantage of that view.
I'd like to hold off on it, because we need to determine the parcel, we need to determine the chain of whether this is actually.
Whether this is actually. I'm wondering if maybe we should hold off on sketch until we have that, until you know that, we know that. And uh. And then go from there. It could change things and so we wanna be.
Also, is that other house gonna get torn down?
This one, yeah, it's it's very that should.
So we'll adjourn this the the next meeting and um.
Sketch plan at the next meeting as well. We'll try, we're just continuance of it.
Yeah, we'll try, continue the hearing, bring back as much in more information, you know, the the primary things that you need. And um look into the. Code as far as the sensitivity of these lots.
Oh, yeah, we'll have all this together, um, do you, do you know about when we might have an answer on whether it's a major or minor?
Check with those. Okay, you have to do some research, I guess.
I'll have to work with the consultants, um, and as I said previously, it's sixty-two days.
Thank you all.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Certainly, my name is Ryan Louts, I'm with Crawford and Associates Engineering, I'm here with Mr. Morel, the applicants, as well as the consultants, I may speak. Uh tonight, we're here to discuss the project for ninety-nine East Antrim Road. Which is a single family residence with a attached garage and a workshop building. A project that I said is along East Antrim Road and the parcel is approximately a hundred and twenty-seven acres. Uh with a driveway from East Antrim Road to the house, the driveway is approximately twenty-five hundred feet. Twelve feet width and includes turnouts at a minimum of five hundred feet, we also instituted a large cul-de-sac at the end. Which will accommodate a turnaround for a fire truck. Uh and that exterior transformer pad has been located uh just to the uh the residence. Uh we show a well location and then a uh rectangle area for the septic field, we're still waiting on the county to come out to witness the deep test. I was told they're starting that, so we're just trying to get in the queue for point of time to point of help. Uh but the area we show here is a lot larger than the largest system the county would allow for a septic system, so. Um we're over accounting for disturbance in that in that respect. Think that kind of summarizes the general comments, I spoke with the highway department about the entrance location, uh they had no concerns, they just said whenever we are ready to do. Uh to install the driveway to submit the fee check for the uh permit, and they didn't want to come out there and verify the location at the point in which we're uh entering from. I also had a conversation with the fire chief last week about our application in the driveway, uh they provided me with some general sizing of their fire apparatus. That they currently have, I think the the number was around thirty-three and a half feet long, we utilized an SU forty, which is a single unit forty foot. Uh vehicle and that can navigate the driveway from the entrance and then as well the turnouts, so it's a little bit larger than the fire truck, but. Uh we typically use an SU thirty, which is a little bit larger than a fuel truck for deliveries of uh fuel oil and things like that, but given the size of their apparatus. Uh we did increase the size of some of the uh radiuses just to accommodate the larger trucks. Off the top of my head, I I don't know off the top of my head, um when you show um. Yeah, I thought they said I don't know, but yes, it's at least that, not bigger, they're likely larger, we enlarged them to fit the fire trucks. Make the radiuses.
What did you set the first?
Oh, yeah, I'll I'll just add a few things during the. So this this currently a farm access for you on Stafford's?
The plan, the dissection is that the very short visibility. Like it's yeah, between two hills and can see anything. It's anything that's a ride like pretty fast, it's it's a disaster, we're gonna have horizontal property. Possibly going outside, so it was like a very unsafe.
So you're saying because of the visibility, because it seems to be the natural location, you're coming in down, going over hills.
The grid does rise to here, so we locate our driveway somewhere near the apex of that hillside. And the highway department also agreed this location was better for uh access than this existing uh farm access.
But when you're there, like being on top of the hill, you really see the traffic.
And it's hard to see in this, but this is is a curve as well, it's coming down and around a curve. It sight distance, I'm sure if you look at that would be unsatisfactory to even pound standards, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that entry met the permit or the driveway permit with the.
And the highway department have spoken about this driveway a number of times, so I'm sure that that will be no no issues with them.
Like less than forty degrees, it looks like ninety degrees.
Yeah, it's still very flexible with the curves and everything, it hasn't been flat very often, you can, you know. There's there's a big bankway here, we wanna stay as close as possible, so we don't take any spillway here. We do, the 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 building site is all here, so we do have to cross that field one way or another. So there's there's um a very sensitive area around here, there's a fence right here. The buffer and close to the driveway will stay between ten and twenty foot away from the buffer.
It is included in the survey that was conducted by Wesley Chase, which is referred to in our uh on our site plan, we do call, we do show this, if you look at. Uh the lines I did for well, and the same lines that we show, um somewhere in here. So, yeah, we do include that, so it's it's here, I mean, then this is the buffer as well, it's showing, um.
And what about for where the transformer is located?
No, yes, you can still see there is a dotted line that comes up and around there as well, we're in, we're outside of that as well.
It looks like a big driveway to the transformer.
Uh again, if for National Grid to access it, or I'm sorry, National, Central Hudson to access it, they're gonna require an access width of at least fifteen feet. We're talking about width or length, I'm sorry.
The whole thing, I mean, it just seems really huge, normally, is this like the green box that we normally see on properties?
Uh it will likely be something like that, yes, and I, we've been, we've dealt with utility companies in the past, and they'd like it as large as possible, but. Um I don't know if we've had exact correspondence from the electricians on the their specific requests for that, but. Generally, I'd like to be able to fit a full-size uh utility truck there, which you can do here.
And will you be marking where the utilities are going to be located? They're all underground coming in and where they're coming in?
They're gonna follow, they're gonna follow the driveway, the only thing we're waiting for is to hear the exact location from the electrician, then where. They're gonna put a stop point from the other side of the road, um and once we know that, then we can, uh we can show that if that's required, but. It's generally gonna follow the driveway as far as we can and then turn off to here to um.
When you say that, I mean. Who decides that exactly where it's going, I mean, you're gonna flag out like this buffer zone, so that when those guys come and dig and. They know exactly where the buffer is and that they don't.
I mean, that one hundred percent, yeah, that one hundred percent can be a condition against, if the board feels like that, so I need that's one hundred percent agreeable. And it could be either flagged, or I know in other instances, we've used like a snow fence, something like that, because it's more noticeable than just flags.
That's, I think that's a great idea, because it's why people don't park on it.
It absolutely does, no, and I, we've we've utilized the orange snow fence a lot, because people see that and they.
There there was so definitely where you are.
No, that was supposed to be in color.
Can you just help me, I'm looking for the the permits to disturb and it's very hard to tell.
I mean, I know it's in, yeah, yeah, it's in a bunch of places, so. Okay, from the property boundaries?
Yeah, I I don't know where the property ends over here.
Understood, yeah, so what you're looking at is probably a map and then something like here, so this, no, I'm just.
I know here, there's nothing on my map.
Correct, correct, we 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 brought a larger scale of drawing, this is about a hundred and fifty scale drawing, I believe yours is eighty.
Yeah, yours has got a bigger. Area than covered, not just the sheet, it's the area.
Yep, no, we will include this as a as a.
You know, we know where you are.
And we can show setback like on the zoning. There there are gonna be hundreds of, for hundreds of feet from them, so, um but we'll show them just so you can see that, absolutely.
Uh how many bedrooms are you building here?
Uh in total, it'll be six bedrooms, because the system we're currently designing for. That's what we're designing for, yes.
I gotta ask this question, certainly has nothing to do with anything, but you got a gamble roof on the house and the barn and the garage. You don't have it off the barn.
I cannot answer that question.
Okay, I would have thought they wanna kind of match, gamble is not unusual.
So that part of the bedrooms are above the garage?
Correct.
There are two.
So it's not a separate apartment or?
No, no, there's a bunch of garage.
This is gonna be one of those gold-plated barns with all the.
No, you know, I think.
I could have answered that question.
The whole, the whole idea of this is to bring in an eighteen-century farm buildings. House. The barn is from seventeen ninety, eighteen hundred, it's a, it's a Dutch barn. Um the houses are all modeled after barns of that period, and they're all arranged and juxtapositioned to one another that as they would do in that period. Uh planning uh hay barracks, horn grits. And all that kind of thing.
This isn't an old barn like here, that's an old, and the house is, the house is an old framed house too.
And the, and the, the uh. The uh carriage barn is is modeled after uh, you know, early Dutch. Buildings and timber frames we found in the area. This is different, no, it's old and.
Oh, you're bringing in?
That's what we do, yeah. The the barn was done, uh if you know, does anybody here know about dendrochronology? Because that separates fact from lore, so what we do is we have core samples taken by scientists. That can, they take core samples and they put it on a computer and they slide the growth rings of the tree. Back in time till it matches other species. So they can tell you the year that that uh that that uh timber was uh held to build that house. So it's dendro, right, chronology, uh the the study of uh tree growth and tree roots. So that's what we've got going on over there, it's just the the tip of the iceberg. And uh we, if if we're successful here, we we hope to share that, uh you know, with the local. Uh the Star Commission and all of you folks, uh it's something quite different than we normally see.
Like it might become all this news farm in uh.
You know, I think something else is kind of missing from just the general layout of where the house is gonna be. Because Olivia is, they're they're gonna have animals and they're preserving the farm fields, so the prime farm fields. We're trying not to transect them with driveways to skirt around them and keep animal fenced-in areas continuous. And then to build on a. The choice was made to come down from the high point, which was the Columbia Land Conservancy building envelope. So this is halfway in the site, and if do we have a map so everyone can kind of figure out where they are and say, did you bring that area photo, because that really helps.
You don't know this map?
Is that, I'm sorry.
There's no area, no.
I think it was around around.
You have the Columbia Land Conservancy? Like the. No, no, I mean, the uh where they, they have the house. That was the, yeah, so this preserve in the farm field and then taking this kind of uh. Part of the land that is not prime farm, it's got a lot of um bedrock. And it's, and it's also sitting kind of in a place that's. Distanced from the two wetlands around it. Um so there's, and and like Olivia said, there are two calcarious fens there. And they're gonna have consoling come and, you know, show them exactly how important these calcarious fens are and how. Then how to best manage them for conservation. With, you know, potential grazing animals, because that is, grazing animals are actually beneficial to. To preserving fens, if they're in there at the right time of year, doesn't interfere with the. The the uh bob turtle. And I, yeah, and any fencing, I think we should always be thinking of turtles being able to pass the need. To move, like any, any construction fencing. The silk fencing, you know, we just have to make silk fencing jagged, so if a turtle can make its way around. It's a big issue, so we really have to think like that and that's what they wanna do.
Fully aware, I mean, we were discovering the property as we go, this. We got the property last July, I've never heard about fans before, ever, so. It's incredible, and we're gonna, we're gonna have a Rachel, Rachel Stevens at the end of June or May. Teach us about it, it's, there are a lot of very sensitive areas and it's.
And there are like a few very precious trees, they're gonna be. Um you know, new fencing around it, this this um, we call it the New England.
Like all the Ontario fences, you've seen them, but the old style fences, sometimes they zigzag. You're a multi-rail fence.
They're not posted in the ground.
It's it's not a modern fence at all.
Huge oak tree, which is right next to the construction site. And and I will be protected, they'll they'll be placed way outside the roof.
There's, yeah, there's three major trees that are gonna get protected, there are.
There's a big.
You know, not even really affected by construction, but we don't want anybody to park into them or the.
So you said this reference Wesley's third day. But this is not Wesley's third day. But this is not Wesley's third day.
I believe so. I'm, I'm sorry. I guess I can't see. This is showing what genuinely departed who has that other area. This is our house area. When we changed it done, it's mapped in twenty. And so this is the same parcel. This was the discussion about when the Columbia Land Conservancy, yeah. A parcel design. Uh, no, it's just being on this direction. This is the survey map which includes the location of the. I think we can remove this from the. I didn't wanna not include the.
Well, you need a survey. This is the scene because it's got information that's.
Certainly, remove the, remove the, the old. Certainly, I think that's a problem.
Yeah, they're gonna need to quit or see or nothing for.
Yep, the contractor will file for that when they're, whenever they're ready to begin construction. We expect that to be conditioned before they get.
Before we grant approval. Trial for, that's in our policy.
Is that a condition or? Well, I guess more on that end because it's, I'm not sure if there's.
No way after we approved it, you got it. So we'd like to see it before we approve it and we'll be.
Okay, I guess we've seen it done as if you can't get a building permit until that point, but that's fine.
Yeah, and obviously the staff, you can't do anything without a staff that approved.
Again, that can't be a condition that has to be met. Uh, previously, yes, and for the other location. Um, and there was a system that was approved by the county to be put there. We're moving the system so they have to come back out and do another investigation. I tried talking to Mike to see if we could just. You know, utilize the same kind of idea and send it in for anything, but he don't, he wanted to come out and look at it. So we're still in coordination.
We have another application later in the agenda that has a similar problem and moving the. It's not all that easy to do.
Understood, that's.
Yeah, so you gotta come back with a set of letter. An engineer design that they've improved. I don't know, maybe a raised bed system.
That's what we, that's what we show there is the size would be the largest system, which would be a resistance.
If you're gonna do that, then can you show the, the change in topos of the. Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, to see how far that actually gets disturbance.
Pretty close to the barn. If you're gonna, you may have a clay room and all kinds of things going on around. May need to be pushed a little bit further away.
We're trying to avoid cutting trees, but understood. Yeah, definitely.
I mean, there's, you know, setbacks to the beach fields from, anyway, that doesn't seem to be enough. So you guys some work to do and currently going in the right direction. Do you have any other comments? Thoughts, considerations?
So I think they were also missing an ag note.
Oh, I thought it was.
Yeah, there's a standard that we put on there here.
Certainly, we can have that.
Guess we'll be in.
Certainly. So I guess the, the question I was gonna say is that for some reason we don't have. Uh, Mr. Gueruzio from the Health Department to the site, do we postpone his application of meeting if for some reason?
He's coming back. We need this specific thing in the outline to come back with. And we're in agreement, we can vote on.
That's fine. I, I don't wanna not show up or, or push an application or something here.
Did, did you ask for like some of the stuff to be like, um, the setbacks?
Yeah, we'll show this something that shows the house tying into the property lot. Can't just be in the middle of a field. It can be, but it has, you know, even with five thousand.
Understood. Yeah, we'll, we'll include all that. That's no problem.
Then, I don't know, the grading is here is pretty flat, but you know, we should have some grading.
I think it needs.
Rainwater or something. Okay, you got some work to do.
I'm, I'm not sure when the county told you to do that for coming out and limiting stuff.
Arno. This is a referral.
Yeah, there's only one.
Zoning board. Area variance. The whole lot is non-conforming, but what I can tell, they're doing a, an addition. Kind of almost, I guess, doubling the side. That's all to share, so pass it on.
Read out this location. So this is the.
Yeah, the heavy line is the addition.
Do we normally, so, so, um, the, I think the, then they pass it to our. Can we get their notes? Do they?
We have to redo it. We don't know what they discussed, so they refer.
So I, I can say that they, um, they did refer it to the planning board, um. During their initial meeting, one of the things that came up was the presence of the NWI wetlands. So if you look at, um, the one corner, um. There is a small stream. And then kind of towards the back, there's also some wetlands that are very, very faint on the printed map.
I mean.
Yeah, it doesn't comply with any of the setbacks, but it doesn't go beyond. The setbacks that are established by the initial structure, so.
Yeah, so this is actually a whole wetland complex right.
What the existing building establishes. But it doesn't comply with code as far as the setbacks.
Yes, correct.
Or they're, yeah, they're.
And I'm going in further than what's already been established, but what's established.
Yeah, so if you review the section of the zoning code that deals with non-conforming uses. There are different setback standards than the underlying zoning districts. So I did reach out to Nan, Hugh, and John Lyons and, um. I worked with Ed to revise his initial determination, um, regarding this parcel.
But there are no special setbacks.
It's the, the twenty-five foot setback is what applies because it's a non-conforming law.
So it's like the line we have non-conforming, but if we change it.
This isn't to use, this is, this is the area.
Yeah.
This is an area variance, so the zoning board of appeals does have jurisdiction. To review the application for an area variance.
We can make recommendations and everything like.
Which still depends on, and he's not gonna come back, uh, he's gonna go for building permit if it gets approved.
We don't see the, what the house is, so this is on a male level and this is gonna be higher, upraised. It looks like that, yeah.
I don't think there was any art picture.
Yeah.
Yeah, the new element is two stories. I don't know what the existing. The pictures would have been like.
That's the. Yeah. Not the actual this, this area. It is in an NWI zone here.
This where the stream is.
Where the stream is, but not where this is actually happening now here.
So should that go on the plan so that they know what the hundred fifty footer is?
Because they could, um.
I mean, they're working on the other side of the house, right? Then the other side where the buffer is or not.
Exactly. They're, they're working way over on the. So it isn't, they showed that it wouldn't. In this case, it wouldn't make a difference because it would only be closer to the current structure.
Um, Colleen. Presumably, they would probably use the existing entrance. Which is on the side closer to the wetlands that you're discussing, so it could have some impact.
Yeah.
The construction itself.
Yeah, it does. It shows a curve, but it's very faint.
But it, that's not a new curb cut.
No, that's.
So it. That's not gonna affect what's happening here for this application.
Yeah, I mean, we're, they're showing us what they sent to work.
Right.
So what's the recommendation moving along? Amen suggestions? Erosion control.
Uh, yeah, I would suggest erosion, yeah, erosion control for the.
Downside of the property.
I don't think it's, it's not increasing the degree of non-conformity.
Right.
So.
They did their best job trying to within this, the limits of what was already established. Maybe they should just be careful where they stockpile any kind of excavation material.
That's why I say that, let them know where the, um, that buffer is.
Yeah, I mean.
And that's not a big thing that does put that on a map or flag it on site so that they're never not.
Yeah, I mean. Right, and it's not going to hurt to, to add that to have the applicant add that. Just adding that butter line. Just for, you know, the contractors, yeah, that are working there.
Jay, you taking, so you could pass this on?
Yep.
Wanna give it a negative recommendation or positive recommendation or no recommendation?
In the stream.
In the buffer some, yeah.
I have a moment.
I, I guess I would make a, a motion to approve. To, to send back. Letter stating our concerns to the.
Zoning board. We, we give it a negative, positive, no recommendation at all. Um, do we do, do that? Yeah, I think they look to us this thing. So we, we give it a positive recommendation for, from, from our standpoint. Doesn't say they, they could do what they want. They can deny it or approve it.
Okay.
Having said. We're good.
I'll draft a letter and have Joe sign it.
All right. Now we learn her.
Um, we identified a small typo on the drawing, so we have updated sets if anyone would like that.
Thank you for identifying that. The tiny red, yeah.
Okay, don't identify yourself.
Yes. Hi, everyone. Thank you for your time this evening. My name is Maria Berman and I am with Berman Horn Studio. The architecture office that is representing the applicant, Abraham McNally and Julie Lerner. We underwent an abbreviated site plan review that was approved last July on seven, seven, twenty-two. Um, for a residential project at ninety-eight Hall Hill Road. Um, we received approval at that point with two conditions. The first being securing a building permit. In the second being a, a final DOH approval for the setback. Um, since then, unsurprisingly, perhaps.
Yes, you have a building?
Not yet, no. Yes, no, no. So we, Ed Ferrato recommended that we go back to you. No, 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 not at all. Um, so since then, actually, we've been going, undergoing a. A series of value engineering, you know, budgeting and bidding. And because of that, um, the result of that has been a, a proposed change in both scope and sighting of the house. Because we're trying to positively impact the budget of the house. Previously, we had a much longer driveway. Um, as well as a garage, so we are now proposing removing the garage from the scope. and citing the house a little bit closer to the road and a little bit further downhill to shorten the driveway significantly, which will not only impact the budget positively, but also greatly reduce the area of disturbance.
The only thing that hasn't changed is the curb credit.
Exactly. That is correct. That has not changed, and that was approved by the highway department. We met them on site. Um, in terms of the house itself, uh, the footprint has changed negligibly. It's actually smaller by about two hundred square feet. And the volume is just a little bit simplified as well. Um, but the bedroom and bathroom counter remain the same, so our understanding is, or our goal is to use the same design for the septic system that was worked out by Mark DiRusio, uh, as well as Pat Prendergast. Um, and that's the drawing that you're seeing here. Um, in meeting and discussing with Mike on site and over phone calls and emails, the site is consistent more or less throughout with very compressed soils, um, and generally speaking, consistent slope. So, um, it's a raised system. Uh, so when we initially started talking to him, you know, we said, is there any better place to put it? He said, it's all the same, more or less, but, um, you know, so we're hoping to be able to adjust the septic as needed to reflect this new, um, site conditions.
You moved it about two hundred feet.
The which? The house? Yes, it's down the hill.
We were gonna need something from him.
Okay.
Blessing it.
Okay.
My first question, I don't think we have the authority to move to two hundred.
Okay.
Move to ten feet.
Understood.
Two hundred feet, i- if that's what he said, if he can send us a brief note.
That's fine.
Fine. We'll be fine with that, like, we gotta have something.
Understood. And I think that's very fair. Is that sufficient in terms of a communication with him?
Something.
Okay.
Right, it could be an email.
Okay.
He's happy and that the, it is the exact design. You know, I went through the chronology of, you know, it's certainly a better use of the land from a driveway standpoint, coming straight into the side of the house.
Yes.
The house kept moving down the hill.
Yeah.
How many bedrooms is that?
Four bedrooms.
How many of our people is it about?
The house is about twenty-five hundred square feet. Small house. Smallish.
You have. You should get it designed, drawn, the last, um, and you got far along.
Um, so you, on the second page, you just have the elevation. Yeah. Yes, exactly, because we, we realized we had that last time, so we included that as well. The, the house has become, the volumes have shrunk a little bit. There used to be, you know, it's still a relatively compact house, but it's become more compact.
So it refers to the. It does follow SWIP or runoff and.
So treat, in our previous application, we had much, a much larger area of disturbance. And so actually, Pat helped us put together a SWIP. Um, in this case, the area of disturbance is much less. So actually, I, that's one of the questions to you. It's significantly less, um, and under an acre, so what should we do with our SWIP at this point?
What's, what your plan says follows SWIP, is that, but that's a question.
Well, I mean, we left that on there because in good faith, if you ask us to maintain the SWIP, we will, you know, we already have it. But obviously, it is, you know, if that's something that you feel like we couldn't avoid, we could revise the drawings accordingly.
Yeah.
Right.
You'd have to measure it. If you can confirm the area is under an acre, technically, you're not required.
Okay.
But, but, you know.
It's absolutely under acre.
Pink area.
Yes, that's what's the point.
I think it's realistic for the area of disturbance, at least. You still got about five, six thousand feet of additional air.
But it's significantly still under an acre.
Yeah.
Okay.
You could show us the measurement. Because we went down even more.
Mm-hmm.
Finally, we went down even more.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, because the, the road's short.
We are, our policy and their policy is an acre, one acre of disturbance.
Okay.
That was why my first question was, have you started?
Mm-hmm.
That could have made a whole different.
Mm-hmm.
Scenario where what was timed up or not. Was still under a virgin situation and okay.
Do you know where the power's coming in?
Uh, yes, so there's a pole across the road. Uh, it's marked on the plan.
Yeah, exactly. And so then you're gonna have to be another pole on your side?
Yeah, I believe that we're going to have.
And we've already had that discussion with the power as well, so they're aware of that. So they helped us identify the location for the driveway entrance because there is a bit of a hill there, so the sideline conditions are kind of at the best in that location.
Well, I mean, I know there, there's a bit of a straight, a lot less area than what you, at first, where you were going to be. But I live on Hall and Road, I know a piece of property, and it's, 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 it's a hill.
It's a bit of a hill.
And there's people that live down the road from there, and there's a stream in the rooms underneath their road, it gives a little, again, I would think we should still use this, but, um, it's been, you know, just protective for people and environment.
Absolutely. I believe that stream is over a thousand feet down, but absolutely, and to be good neighbors, we're.
Yeah, they are showing a hill.
Mm-hmm.
So is there, um, where does it show like the whole piece of property? Um, I mean, this, if it's not marked out where it is.
I don't need something.
So where are we, like, kind of near?
It's like very.
I think it's fine, yeah. So has, has it not been farmed in a long time?
They used to pasture.
So it's not. Oil, it must be important.
Yeah, they used to pasture.
Yes.
Yeah, like a metal.
Mm-hmm.
Right, because this kind of, is it soil that's safe for it? I'm gonna check. Roads, let's check that. Like in the middle of the field, isn't it?
Uh, I think it's a little bit one side.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Hopefully a little.
It is much closer.
But I mean, like, it goes way up this way and.
It's closer to the top and closer to the road. But it's not at the top.
It's down off the top.
Mm-hmm.
There's one right behind you, even on fire. It's been there for years.
Oh, the which? Yeah. Oh, yeah, that's been there for a while.
So these other trees are gonna, whatever tree you hear, I mean, that's kind of scrubby, right?
There's just very few trees. It's mostly scrubby, um, are the.
Cedar tree.
Exactly.
Cedar.
Are they gonna clear that? Are they gonna keep it?
Everything's gonna be kept. And then the tree line will not be impacted now.
Yeah.
Exactly, yeah.
So it looks. I missed, I'm mistaken. So, um, um, the southern part of the house, there are farm, there are soils of farm or statewide importance, but not where the house is, no. You have to look at it to see what I'm, what I'm looking at, but.
May I take a look?
Yeah, so we can start. This is. Wait a minute, is it the one here, here's all hell. So there's the area. There you go.
Mm-hmm.
So it's statewide and on, that is in this area, but the house is over, it's closer to here.
Yeah, it's, it's, the scale is a little bit hard to read, but it's right down, it's in that white area, very close to the road.
Yeah, so they're not in the area where the the soils are considered. Of course, there is some. Alien in this, but. Yeah.
It's always gonna pass. Just a pasture cattle here to go.
Mm-hmm. I think they, they hope to actually maintain that because they're friendly with, um, the neighbors, so, yeah. Yeah, so I think the goal is to just maintain the very natural quality of it, of the pasture.
So that's, like, why aren't they asked for something that they have back for?
Yeah, they gotta get us something on the subject. The subject being relocated, you know, concerns me. I mean, if he's fine with the soil conditions, but, you know, moving it two hundred feet could end up being a bedrock for all we know. So I think we just, you know, and like I said, it doesn't have to be, you know, it could be an email that he's seen your plan, will reference the plan.
Of course, and the date.
We get a lot of letters saying, we approve this, and there's no reference to anything when you go back, which one?
Understood. I have a question. If we can get that email from him and send that in, do we need to appear once more or is, does that meet the condition?
And was there anything else we wanted to know about sort of electrical?
We already said that we're not, they don't get into the SWIP.
Right, we don't have to renew the SWIP. And you're gonna follow the SWIP.
Yeah. Yeah.
We just put it over on the going.
Yes, well, it's, it's there.
It's there.
Yeah.
So in the well, has you determined where the well will be?
So right now, the well is set to be to follow all setbacks from the house, so we show.
Probably in the back.
Yeah.
Is that?
Yeah, you'll show it right here.
There, okay. Let me see it. Okay, thank you.
The big thing is that that they provided the architectural, which is good. Anything else, anybody else want to? And see. We'll make it brief if you get the letter.
Okay, understood.
Maybe you, and we're, we're, we do do Zoom, so.
Mm-hmm.
You can zoom in and get this just back.
Okay.
It'll be early on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it. I know it's been a long night, and you almost be fired. Okay, thank you so much.
Wrong impacts.
And before you take off, um, I will need copies, um, electronic copy of the map that you just submitted.
Mm-hmm.
As well as if a member of the planning board could retain two copies of the maps that were just submitted for my files.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Will do.
Okay, thank you.
So. We did not, and we have, and I'm, not for the, um, applications, but for that subdivision. We have, we didn't hire an engineer to do it. Do we ask for that now or do we wait until the next plan?
I think you gotta wait to see, now that it was a preliminary application.
Okay.
So let's wait to see if they come back and. And then we'll get a.
Get that.
Yeah, we'll get an extra one. I think that's more engineering than planning.
I think. I'd like to hear.
That's.
I mean, we, we had it on for subdivision and commercial, that's under you and, uh, things like that, that we would have Nan reviewed things anyway, so.
All right. Item is the RSG Farms LLC.
Yeah.
Would that be you?
That would be me.
That would be, okay, we have that, we have the, a bit of stuff there that we have. This is it. That's the only copy. We only got one copy, which a little bit of a problem for us, but we'll share it, so, okay, wanna tell us what's going on here?
Sure, I'm representing, uh, the, uh, RSG Farms LLC, and it's for a short-term rental application for the farmhouse that, uh, sits on the property.
Are you gonna be the manager?
I am, correct. Yeah, I currently manage the property for Stacy Surgeon and will be overseeing the, the short-term rental.
So what, tell us what the rental involves.
Uh, the rental's gonna go on Airbnb and it's gonna go on Burboro, and, uh, they're gonna do it, um, uh, per week, or, uh, somebody wants to do it for the weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, um, it'll go up, uh, daily as, as well. Uh, so this is two, five, four, um, uh, two, five, four, zero, what we do.
How many these bedrooms and how many people are here?
So it'll be six people and it's, uh, three bedrooms.
Is there any other rental space in this building?
And no, it is just the farmhouse.
Just the garden.
Correct. There's a garage, but not rented.
We're not a part of that. Side with propane tank there and.
Oh, so that, that is all part of the, uh, the garage, so that has no other rental there.
In the garage?
No, nope.
That's located behind this.
That is located behind that, so that'll all be locked, not accessible to.
But it is.
It's storage. There is not an apartment there, it's storage. It was originally a, a wood shop.
Um, this is where I'm.
The one thing that concerning here is that this is on a cesspool.
Correct, yes, uh. The engineer did look at the cesspool and it, it is in working order and it's, uh, you know, part of the original farmhouse. So it did have an engineer to look at it.
Do you know?
It's located to the right of the driveway, so if you're coming up the driveway.
On the stream side?
Yes.
They're already in that buffer.
Yeah, so the driveway is actually like.
It's in the buffer, right?
Yeah, it's working fine. We can enter the stream behind this.
Yeah, that's cool.
That's cool being over there. It, it would be nice to actually see it on the drawing where it is.
We have to schedule a public hearing, so.
All right.
You're gonna have to come back anyway. We, it, it would be nice to have a drawing to scale of the site and show us the cesspool.
All right.
You had somebody draw. Floor plans here.
There is all the plans from. It showed everything, all the plans, Ryan started.
Yeah, right.
Yep, exactly.
It should speak to part of the.
No, that would be accurate. There was surveys done.
Yeah. I mean, we don't know the history of the last prior use, so it might have been limited. Cesspools are kind of real antiquated.
Do you know when the house renovated, did Stacy bother, did she renovate it? And, and is the amount of bedrooms the same as it used to be?
The amount of bedrooms are the same, uh, mid, limited renovation, you know, updating some things, painting.
But.
But nothing structural, nothing added, no addition, so it's the original plan of, uh, when it was purchased.
And no additional bedrooms?
No additional bedrooms, no. You have living room, dining room, kitchen, bathroom, and then that's three bedrooms are upstairs. Um, it was inspected, one bed, yeah, two, uh, yes. Um, and then the, um, inspector did come and go through, and there were some, uh, safety concerns that, uh, called out, and those were corrected and re-submitted. Those end with that, ooh, eighteen, a hundred, I believe, is what was put on the tax code. Been there a while.
Probably Washington Kings that added.
Yes, but that was prior to the, uh, so that had happened during the, um, like, that was already there, and so, uh, it wasn't added as part of this remodel. Yeah, I think since eighteen hundred it was, yes, but there was a Washington there, uh.
And that cesspool's been there since eighteen hundred.
Exactly. Yes, correct, yep.
The cesspool was designed to the house in the eighteen hundreds, but it didn't have dishwasher and washing.
Right, right.
You might have had the bedrooms.
Right.
The bedrooms are confirmed.
Yeah.
Might have had one of those.
Okay, so, um, you know, we have to come back with, I think. I think we should schedule a public hearing or. Whatever you guys.
But that's one thing about the cesspool thing, I mean, we're making, I mean, Pat says it's, it's working fine now, but as far as we consult our engineer, that is, it's an acceptable thing, especially that it's right here. But as far as we consult our engineer, that is it's an acceptable thing, especially that it's right here in the stream.
Yeah, that it's right on the stream. Plus, nobody's been living there. And how would they know?
Correct, it hasn't been uh any, nobody's lived there in the most recent couple of years, but there was somebody renting it prior to um Stacy's been purchasing it. So there was somebody living there um at, within the last five or six years.
But it's been sitting kind of.
It has been sitting kind of. Yeah, it did have a rent, uh, had a family friend staying in it um during the summer, but it was a like a two month period. Um, somebody coming up, so it had been lived in since Stacy has purchased it. And that's where that cesspool has been functional, it hasn't been, had, didn't have an issue. I know the engineer did look at it, but I I understand the concern.
But it's not being used, we sent our engineers and said, oh yeah, it's working fine. The location, I think you're more critical.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not being used, it's working fine.
So um, that isn't something that like for renewal, if this came up for renewal, that's something that Ed would check.
Can I please say something? I I don't know how to get my hand up. This is Stacy Shergin, I'm actually on Zoom. Am I allowed to say something for a minute?
Sure.
So I do wanna say, it hasn't been sitting idle. I lived in the, in that house for a year when my, when there was COVID with my three kids and my wife. And after that, when I built the house in the back of my property. Four of my workers who are family friends from my regular business live there for over a year. So the bathrooms have been used consistently since I bought the property. There were, there were also goat farmers living there for for six months. So there have been people living in that house, so I just wanna be clear, it's not that the cesspool's been sitting quiet, the cesspool's been used consistently since since I purchased the house in twenty twenty. Yeah, no, I just wanted you guys to know, it's not that nobody's been living there. The the house has probably been lived in more since twenty, in twenty twenty, since the prior owner, you know, died ten years ago or fifteen years ago.
So my question was, when Ed does an inspection for a renewal. Would he be checking? If that cesspool is still functioning properly and what are the rules for when things like that stop working? But if it's leaking.
What it.
Into the sweet.
It, but well, it's going in the soil.
Which could be washing down the ground.
It's just.
If it starts to overly, I think the soil gets soft and you get the smell of it, it's not really getting absorbed.
The only way we know, they're probably testing water.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I guess I just don't understand the difference between. My myself using it or the people that have been living in that house for all, you know, the last two and a half, three years. Or six people on a weekend for an Airbnb rental. I don't see what the difference is.
Well, the difference is that now it's before the board that we have to do our due diligence.
The rental, our weekend or we we can do that. Either way.
Correct, you can do it for either.
That's asking to give the time for something like that right now, but sorry.
Correct, so there there typically is then space between rentals.
Yeah, yeah.
The system is not going to be continuously used.
I think we need some professional advice.
Well, isn't that the purpose of Pat Pendergrass or an engineer coming to look at it? Which he did, and he he certified that the system was okay, so what does that mean that I need professional advice?
What was the other comment that is, his comment was that if events fail.
Well, it'd be updated.
It would have to be updated to call it.
We're not a one up. But it says. No, I mean, we have to do a lease field.
Yes.
Which is kind of what you noted on your.
Yeah, room for understood.
Right. Funny room to do that. You didn't speak to the capacity of that.
I don't think there's any way.
The capacity is set to the number of veterans.
Be a fleet field.
Right.
We don't, I mean, is it six foot round? Is it square?
We, yeah.
So. I have a question, you said this is a one bedroom?
No, three.
Okay, okay.
Well, I I I guess my suggestion is we schedule a public hearing and we reach out. We we reach out to somebody to give us a veteran, I, George.
I just wanna make sure that it is.
Yeah, we should get another.
Has the, the bedrooms and. Yeah, I mean, we're assuming that it's working in, and we think it's working. Right, nineteen twenty, you know, so.
I know it, we all know the, that idea and the bad location.
Yeah, it's still gonna be there whether or not you do the STR or not.
Right, right.
You know, the house is still being used, it's time to remodel or something like that where. Or maybe it's a matter of this doesn't hold up over time.
In actuality, if we get a special youth rent for STR in two years, we got, you got, you got the right look at.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right.
Basically, having an engineer look at it like this is probably about what you can do, shorter. One testing or.
So they just look the soil too?
I know exactly what he does.
Yeah. Determine that, digging it up and looking inside. Which you do with a septic tank every four or five years. You dig it up, you open it up and you empty it.
Get pumped out.
Yeah.
There's nothing to pump out. It's not like a tank that holds liquid, like a rapid. Just everything just solid, it doesn't separate solids.
Yeah, yeah, it does, you you do pump them out because it does collect solids, it's the only difference is that is that the liquid material is. Leaching out directly from the tank rather than going through pipes and then into a leach field and into a.
And a septic tank has an intero. Activity going on which helps to break down the solids and it maintains temperature, septic tank is always warm. So this just. You know, it doesn't break down the solids, they're just there. Whatever's left collects and I guess you pump it out.
Correct.
Do they have a regular pumping app? Have they done that or?
Uh, it hasn't needed to be pumped out since the system had, and and when we looked at it, it would have had, you know, solid material in it. Um, so it hadn't yet just because of use, again, and you're gonna pump them about the same as you do regular septic, like you said.
So you haven't had it pumped.
No, I am.
Is there a removal cover on?
Yes, correct, so you, and he did inspect it, so you can see it. Can see the holding tank.
He says it's working properly, what does that mean then? I mean, how would it not work properly?
And the ground was so saturated and you would see water in the tank and like the gentleman said up here, it would then back up into the house. And the water isn't permeating out into the soil, just like your septic tank with a leach field. If it's not leaching out, it's gonna back up into the tank and then back up into the house, so you're gonna know.
Bank there, so if it's close to the bank, you're gonna see it coming out of the bank.
And it'll smell, yeah, cuz it.
I think you would see that before you start going to the house because it's upgraded.
Yeah, I don't think it'll back up, I think it just.
And like with many houses that still have, I mean, this isn't gonna be the only house in the area that is of that age that has a cesspool. If they're in working order, it's one of those things that you'll can tell the difference between a working cesspool and a working septic.
You seem to be pretty diverse.
Real estate agent as well, so I've had to explain this to many, many clients. Many clients. More than I wanna know.
Can I get a motion to schedule?
Yeah, a motion, yeah.
Wait, hold on, um. You were saying a motion to schedule a public hearing?
Yes.
Can, before that, can I get a motion to deem the application complete?
We've asked for a better site plan, so.
So then if the application isn't complete, um, a public hearing shouldn't be scheduled. Just, um, but. It's what the board wants to do.
So the um, the better, uh, what were you looking for?
Site plan, something that looks to scale and locate in the.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, can we do both meetings, both things in the same meeting?
We gotta schedule, public hearing has to be known.
I don't know, I mean, uh, we can't do a review and have a public hearing at the same.
Well, we can review it during the public hearing, make the decision, I was hoping to reach out to somebody on our side to give us another opinion. So.
We don't schedule it now. It puts it another.
Was it another month out?
And another month.
Yeah, so we're planning. It's July.
Definitely, yeah, we could do it in the same meeting just for time purposes, uh, yeah, could we do, that would be.
All right, well, um. We have to do, if we're gonna get somebody else to look at it, that's gonna be our responsibility, but as far as getting us the paperwork, you can get us the revised.
Before ten days.
Weeks before.
Weeks before? So, and again, we're looking for a a site plan.
Yeah, some sort of sketch plan that's the scale, there were drawings that had that information. What shows that's to be added eventually is where this cesspool is.
Compared to the house and the stream and.
We're gonna want permission or we'll reach out to you to have somebody to take a look at it. Tomorrow.
Okay.
Right, is that okay? So we we will, we're gonna schedule a public hearing pending getting the. Revised map or new map, and if we don't have it in two weeks, then we will not schedule a public hearing.
Do you need more than two weeks, Jay, to do that?
What's your drop dead date, being able to schedule a public hearing given? Next meeting is when?
Um, according to the town and Ankrum zoning law and Nan's memo, the application should be complete and determined complete prior to scheduling a public hearing.
So I guess we have to, then we have to wait.
You gotta wait.
They do that, rentals under thirty days are considered short term rental. What was that again? Our rentals under thirty days is very short.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Our next meeting is the first of the month. If that's a rule. We gotta buy and buy.
Our rentals over thirty days are short term rentals?
No. Not under the law. Even in hotels, but over thirty days. All right, so you're gonna have to get us that information and then we'll, we'll be in next month.
That sounds good, thank you.
Well, last night, I think it was thirty. All right, can I have a motion?
Your chair? I got a. I got a quick question.
Oh, I didn't know, is that possible? Yeah, I'm sorry.
Jay, I I asked Jay.
He talked to, he talked to me about it, but he never.
Okay. Yeah, I'm Michael Del Rossi, I got a place over on Five Lakes Shore Drive over on Long Lake. Love the place. Everything is beautiful, except A, the garage is falling down, the house was built by a guy who was a real conservative and used all the lumber out of the dump. To build the house, so it's got issues as well, we redid the porch. Two years, a year ago, a year and a half ago, um, what we would like to do is we're looking at what we're gonna do for the rest of our lives and living up here is just fantastic. And so we'd like to rebuild where we are. However, we'd like to increase the footprint slightly. And my meaning by slightly is that it's a house nine hundred and twelve square feet. We got a garage that's falling down right next to it, there is a four foot alleyway in between the house and the garage. We wanna combine the house and the garage together, so we gain the extra four feet, we're twenty five, twenty six feet away from the road. We can come out about five feet towards the road. Uh, and we want, we'd like to put a second story on as well. Uh, we have a thousand gallon uh septic system. And right now, there's two bedrooms in there, we'd like to have maybe four, if that's possible, I don't know what the limit is. On that goes. So what's the limit for what we have right now? Is it two bedrooms or three? Okay, so we would, we would need to put in a larger tank to have a third bedroom in there, okay. Um, what do I need?
That's up to the alcohol farm.
Okay, okay.
Just general information.
Okay. Uh, one other aspect of it, it's a double lot, it's it's got less than a third of an acre. Um, we've got one retaining wall on one part, but not on the other part that heads literally onto the public beach there. We would like to put a retaining wall there and level out. The floor, uh, level out the ground, is that, all of these are questions about feasibility.
Yeah, I I don't think you have a planning board issue as far as I can.
Okay. Um, so what do I do, what do I kinda do from here, get architectural drawings?
Board because it's on the water.
Yeah, I I am on the water and sometimes, oh yeah, we, and it depends upon how high the lake is, how close the water gets to us.
Yeah, it's always comfortable. Even though it's. I mean. For an addition.
I'm gonna, we're gonna be taking the entire house down and then and then rebuilding it and possibly moving out towards the road away from the lake. I mean, we're fully cognizant of the issues with the lake.
Yeah, I don't know what would send you here.
Okay.
Um, that's a question.
We have that. Another um, like a garage rebuild that changed the footprint.
Many variances.
That's what I'm.
Okay. ZDA?
Get referred here, I mean.
But a lot is gonna depend on what you provide to Ed.
I mean.
What you.
Okay.
Give him and he will look at it and say whether you're meeting your setbacks with the newer construction.
Right.
Um. Yeah, so.
It'd probably be best to start with an architect or an engineer.
Okay, right, and get some drawings up.
Good survey.
Right.
Real survey for him to work with.
Okay.
Um, because unless something triggers him coming to the planning board. Which may be a variance that we had before that was just referred.
Okay, yeah.
Can't think off the top of my head why he would have to know.
Okay, um, just a question about the, you know, about the retaining wall that we would like to continue on on the other other part. Since we are right on the water. Is that, is that a possibility at all? Because we do have a slope that goes down pretty well, it's probably a slope.
And probably you're gonna get referred to D E C.
Right.
Um, and because you're so close to the water and so usually being in that buffer of the lake. Uh, you you shouldn't be disturbing soils.
Right.
And and whether the retaining wall changes the relationship of the shoreline and drainage or something.
Yeah, we'd like to stay away from the shore, shoreline as much, actually as much as we can, well, it's uh been naturalizing, we've taken out a lot of loose strip manually. Um, and and have have succeeded luckily, but now we got gattails, but um. Yeah, so but the slope from the road down to the water is probably about a good foot and a half, two foot drop. So we would like to sort of claim, reclaim that acreage to do some, do gardening and whatnot, and there, and that's, and that's why a retaining wall.
You sure it's your property?
Yes.
Property lines.
Yeah, we have, we we. Yeah, we have, we, we have both lots and it's, I, I got the tax.
But it comes right, the property line comes right down to the water?
Yeah. Yeah.
And just be sure you're building on your land, you get to it.
Oh, no, no, of course. No, of course, so architect. Survey drawings.
Yeah, you need a survey to consider it, yeah.
Right.
You may, you may need an engineer for the septic or whatever.
Okay, if we wanted to, uh, so who, who I, where would I look for towards the, uh, septic and the amount of, uh, bedrooms?
There, I can hear what.
Your engineer.
Alright.
Or the health department.
By the health department, okay.
Health department will come out and witness, he has, this is kind of an unusual situation. I don't, I don't know what you classify it, I mean, there might be a system there, might be a cesspool.
No, no, we, no, it's, it, it, it's a, it's a tank in a leach field, you know? It's not.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I don't know if anything is reusable, the stuff might all be in the way, you need somebody to look at it, give you some advice.
Okay, so an engineer, so an engineer.
Civil engineer.
Civil engineer, okay.
Be the person that will look at the site, you may wanna start there.
Yeah.
See what the possibilities are.
Yeah, that's, well, yeah, that's, that's what I'm trying to get the feasibility out, so.
You can hire an architect that would bring along a civil engineer.
Okay.
Have you hired one, but, you know.
It'd be a good idea to understand what you're gonna need to put in there.
Yeah.
To realize what you wanna do.
Right.
And if, if you find out that it's either too expensive or it's, you know, just not feasible, you may not be able to put in four bedrooms, it might be three bedrooms.
Oh, no, no, yeah, no, no, yeah, no, exactly, yeah.
It may be a fill system.
Right.
Because of the water, I bet you got a high water table there, probably.
Yeah, we got a little wet in the course first.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, you may have to bring in substantial amount of fill. Put a raised bed system in, you may not have the area and it, yeah.
Okay.
It may, second, you may go to the civil engineer first and start with that.
Okay, and then, um.
You know, see.
Just the way you knew.
Yeah, no, exactly, that, that's why.
He may give you advice, you know, build here, move this there.
Right.
Check it here, he may have a better handle on where to start before you get in.
That, and then an architect and drawings and, and then make it, and then, then go to Ed and then. And then come to you, and then come to you. Okay, great, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Hope you were helping.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah.
Alright, now.
Uh.
Motion.
Your chair?
So, yeah.
Yeah.
Lauren Taylor.
Hi.
Hi.
See you next month, Thursday the morning.